Okay, folks, it's just a little bit after six, so let's go ahead and get started. Looks like everyone is here, so we have verification of quorum. Let's go ahead and have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm on next here. Put on my cheaters. Just want to let you know that a lot of people have been working again hard since the last board meeting so that NIC can keep accreditation. There's a lot of work going on. As you probably know, I don't know if it's been noticed on the website yet for the training program, training session?
I don't think so.
Okay, so there's a meeting on...
The second.
On the second, which is, I think, next Tuesday from 3:00 to 5:30, and we'll be covering a lot of the accreditation information and the progress on that. There's a lot of work going on. And just to give you an enumeration of that, the president's annual performance review is underway. That's something they wanted done. One of the lawsuits has been completed, and that's one of the things they wanted done. The ACCT consultants are working with the board to document the board's progress in resolving all of the NWCCU concerns. They wanted it documented, so they had a list done, so there's more people working on that. Just to let you know, and I don't want to steal your thunder, the next NWCC minute visit is for mid-October, and in prep for that, the ACCT consultants are producing a report to turn in on our progress by September 2. So there's a whole set of steps, and we're just crunching through those. I just wanted to point out that there will be, that his training is next week, but we won't have another regular board meeting in July, so that only leaves the end of August and the end of September before the next meeting, so we're really trying to get everything done, or we're going to run out of time. Okay? And one other thing, just a little statement I wanted to make about the, got no confidence on the part of the constituency groups. Just wanted to say, on the behalf of the board, I want to thank the members of all constituency groups for your work on behalf of our students. Also, please be assured that we do listen to your comments, and even though at times we may disagree, we appreciate the time and effort that you put into bringing the thoughts and opinions of your peers forward to help us in making the best decisions possible for NIC and our students, employees, and community. Because most of the issues, if not all of them, are, they brought forward, and your votes and no confidence are congruent with NWCCU's recommendations to reaffirm NIC's accreditation, we are addressing both in our efforts to return NIC to good standard, standing. We appreciate you for your continued dedication to this same goal. As a board, we are committed to continue the professional development, just as an example. That's another thing that the NWCCU wants, as evidenced by our work with ACCT consultants and Dr. Swain. And again, on our next training on July 2, we will focus on the work we still need to do to resolve NWCCU recommendations for the trustees. Essentially, we're looking at what is left to do, well, like a status, and then work on, identify what else is left to do and what we can do to get it resolved. Okay. We also, as I mentioned before, have established the process and began writing responses, and some of it's, keep me busy, I have to have done by Monday, and all the board does. And began, let's see, with Dr., we're working with Dr. Swain, Dr. Kurtz, and ACCT consultants, and our response will be reviewed by the accreditation attorney, Stan Freeman, prior to submission, so there's a whole team working behind the scenes. At our May board meeting, we demonstrated an increased understanding of our roles and responsibilities as trustees, which is part of the issues, and the role and responsibilities of the president. Our approval of the strategic plan goals without revisions, and our approval of the budget as presented by the administration are evidence of our efforts to stay at the policy level and not interfere with day-to-day operations, our respect for the role of the president, and our appreciation of the college's participatory governance process. Another issue that has been resolved, that we have a, we have a signed agreement with Dr. South, that the board will not be renewing his contract, and NIC is severing our relationship with him effective June 30, which is Sunday. We will send notice of this to NWCCU next week, so that's another thing on the checklist. We just keep going down them, and we only, and we're just working them all off. We look forward to continuing to work with Dr. Swain and all of you toward realizing our mission of providing accessible, affordable, and quality learning opportunities to members of our community. Okay? And there, we've had some issues with the heating system. Dr. Swain is, President Swain is going to talk about that.
Yeah, so it was, at 3:00, the heat was not on in this building. They replaced the roof this spring, and they just replaced all the air handlers. That was completed today, but at 3:00, they still weren't working. So I sent a note out to all the board members, say it's going to be hot, dress accordingly, and between 3:00 and 5:00, they got them all working. And, well, they did an override, so they're either on or they're off. So they had them cranking until 5:00. At 5:00, they shut them off because it was like an icebox in here, and so now, it may get a little warm as the, as the night goes on, but that's, that's a result of the new air handlers and working through the bugs of the system, so bear with us.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the next thing is, let's see, celebrating success.
Yeah, so Tammy Haff, and I don't know if Lloyd's going to come up and talk or not, but Tammy Haff is going to present on our accomplishments for summer in terms of recruiting
Good evening. I'd also like to share that Tom Green will be joining me here in just a few minutes to also speak to the good work that we are doing that are in the numbers that you're going to see here in a few minutes. But with that, I'd like to say good evening, Chair Wagner, trustees, President Swain, community members, colleagues, and students. As President Swain mentioned, my name is Tammy Haff, and I am the dean of enrollment services, and it really is a pleasure to be with you tonight and share the news that I'm going to share in just a minute. Wow, what a summer it has been. We have been in a flurry, and I want to let you know that our summer enrollment is up. Our official headcount is 1,091. This is a 16.4% increase from last summer. Even more impressive is that students registered for 5,042 credits, representing a 20% increase over 2023. This is the third time since summer of 2011 that we have seen an increase in the number of registered credits. I am happy to also share that both continuing and new student numbers increased. Continuing student headcount minus dual credit is up almost 28%, and new student headcount, again, minus dual credit, is up over, a little over 30%. Also worthy of noting is our first-time degree-seeking students are up over 60%, and we do expect that most of these students will continue their studies with us in the fall. So I think this speaks a lot to the great work that is being done across campus and the amazing employees that we have here that are positively impacting the enrollment numbers. And with that, I'm going to pass the mic to Tom, who's going to share with you some of the initiatives that are underway at NIC that are making a difference.
Good evening, Chair Wagner, trustees, community members. Thank you for giving Tammy and I the chance to share this great news with you tonight. Thank you, Tammy, for going over summer enrollment numbers. I'd just like about two minutes to quickly go over some of the efforts made by the employees that led to this dramatic turnaround. First and foremost, I think it's important to acknowledge the great work that was done by the recruitment committee and the retention committee. These are hard-working committees led by Provost Lloyd Duman and President Swain, and they are the driving force for our enrollment numbers. They keep us all focused and on point. Most of the factors that contributed to the successful summer numbers either came from or were workshopped in these committees. Here are a few of those factors. Retention efforts have been absolutely key. This included us holding events like registration pop-ups and heavily advertising internally to promote registering early. Mini marketing campaigns. These are highly-focused campaigns that employ personal phone calls, leaving voice messages, texting, and email. Just an example of one of these mini campaigns we ran this year is one that was geared toward recent GED graduates. We had letters go out to every single graduate detailing just how they could take the next step in furthering their education at NIC. That's just one example, but there have been dozens of these mini campaigns constantly going out from the registrar's office to various groups. We also expanded our offerings this summer, which helped a ton, of course. One example is we offered anatomy and physiology for the first time this summer. Other factors included placing a heavy emphasis on writing positive news stories and press releases for the local media. As it shows here, we had more than 115 positive stories in the local media, and it's only halfway through the year. We're also focusing on delivering the right content towards the right audience. That sounds simple, but it can be a little tricky. For us, it means catering our communications towards the individual needs of each group and matching the content to the platform. For example, we're utilizing, utilizing more fun and engaging short-form videos on Instagram to deliver targeted messages to a younger demographic and marketing individual programs that way as well. Lastly, we've expanded our overall awareness marketing, which includes returning some more traditional mediums. We've had some TV commercials and radio spots for the first time in at least 10 years. This is in addition to billboards, direct mail, email marketing, social media ads, digital ads, school newsletters, movie theater ads. And again, for the first time in at least 10 years, we collaborated with the Workforce Training Center, and we, we worked out, so we had an increased presence in the, in the Workforce Training Center catalog that goes out three times a year. And this last issue highlighted our summer programs in particular. We contributed some extra funding so that the catalog could be delivered directly to mailboxes in expanded area codes, in places like Deer Park, Spokane Valley, Meade, Tri-Cities, just to name a few. So like I said, this is just a sampling of the efforts, hard work, and willingness to try new things by many people across campus. With that, are there any questions? Thank you very much.
Looks really great. Thank you. Things are going in the right direction. Okay, president's report.
Thank you, Chair Wagner. So just to add on, the preparation for the writing that has to be, the report that has to be done by the September 2 deadline, that, for everyone's kind of understanding, there are, there are a couple of different letters out there from NWCCU that we have to respond to. One goes back to 2023, July of 2023, and there are, I think, nine requirements that they want us to respond to, and then there were a number that came out, again, they were modified, but more came out in the recent letter that we got in March. So we're responding to all those. We've got three that are out to trustees, three that are, three drafts that are out to trustees to review and, and make comments on. We have another three that are queued up, and about three more that are ready to go, we're, we're working on that will go out as soon as we get feedback on the, back from the first ones. And actually, I'll, Chair Wagner, I'll correct you, we actually, the two lawsuits that the NWCCU made note about in their letters, both of them now are, are cleared. So there are, both the lawsuits are cleared off the books, and, and then we are following, another, another issue they brought up is following policy 20202, which is a presidential performance review. I've submitted my summary of work towards the 10 presidential goals and, that were approved by the board last August. Those have gone out. External evaluator is working on, has, has shared that with the trustees. They'll be providing feedback, and then we'll have an evaluation sometime in, probably in July or August with, with the board. So that's all working. We're, we're following the policy, we're doing the right thing, and I think that really speaks well of our progress over the past year. In terms of enrollment management, you heard the, the celebrating success tonight, but I, I think what, it's, it's really tough to say that, how much work that, that has gone into this. About 30 people on both of those committees, the, the recruiting committee, the retention committee, about 30 people on each of those that have really been active and engaged in that process. The work continues from summer and cascades into fall. I'll show you some fall numbers a little later in the, in the meeting. But I want to say first that a lot of, a lot of credit for our success goes to our interim provost Lloyd Duman. Lloyd has taken this on and led it as a, with heart and engagement, and I think he wakes up at 4:00 in the morning thinking about what else we can do. And so there's just a lot that goes into it, and, and I appreciate all the work that he has done. He has really been the driving force in a lot of that success, so special note to Lloyd for making that happen. In terms of community stakeholder engagement, NIC was really well represented at Family Day in the Park on June 7. We had a community-wide kickoff of summer, last day of class for K-12. NIC employees went and showed up and, and really made a presence there. Last night, NIC and the Workforce Training Center were on hand to share information about programs at the Community Night Out event in Majestic Park in Rathrum, and we're also looking at expanding our community engagement opportunities with things like Sandpoint Rodeo, and we have employees that are signing up to participate in a plethora of summer events from the Fourth of July parade to the, the county fair. And also, there's a, there are a couple of things that of note, and this is our, our softball coach Shay Chapman, you see here, coach of the year, great, great job. We ended up second place in the, in the NWAAC in our closeout season. I will say, just to keep conspiracy theories away, she has, she notified us last week that she is going to step down as head coach. She's a wonderful person, had, was a great coach. We all love her, and we hope that she continues on as an employee at NIC, but she's got a couple of kids that are starting to become active in sports, and she wants to participate. So she went out on a high note as coach of the year and, and just did a remarkable job, so hats off to Shay and all of her work to get there. And then another, another article that you see, everywhere you go in town and in the region, there are skilled workers at, at every, every employment, place of employment, there are want ads out, help-wanted ads out, help signs out, now hiring. Our, our students are in high demand, whether that's coming out of Workforce Training Center or Career and Technical Education. Those, those students, students with skilled trades are in high demand and, and really make a meaningful contribution to the economy and the community, so great coverage on that story. Terms of Workforce Training Center program alignment, earlier, just earlier this week, we were notified that we received a grant, total amount of the grant is about $215,000 to support the ongoing work of mine safety. NIC provides the mine safety training for the entire region. We even go into Washington State to, to do mine safety there, and that, that plays a bigger role. Well, I'll, I'll talk about one of the programs that we're working on as well. Mineral mining in North Idaho is alive and well, and a lot of people think it went away in the, in the 80s, but it is back, and if you, if you look in the paper, you look in any of the want ads, they're, they're hiring, they're hiring diesel mechanics, they're hiring accountants, they're hiring mining engineers, they're trying to hire mine engineers. So, so that's, starting with mine safety, it is an important part of the community that we provide and support the mining industry here in the region. In terms of career and technical education programs, we just, we just found out late last week that we were funded for a $735,000 grant to provide advanced manufacturing in, in Idaho. This is part of a, of a national, during COVID, we, we realized that so much of our manufacturing had been outsourced to Taiwan and China, and, and that became a real problem, and, and we aren't manufacturing our own chips. And so teaching, building chip plants and the people that can operate them is a huge issue, and so they, they actually asked us to participate in this grant. Vicki and her team, along with Rayelle and her team, put together a grant really quickly, and we, we got $735,000 to help that, and it'll expand our mechatronics program, make it a one-year certificate with a two-year advanced certificate in mechatronics, which is really the, the robotics and automation kind of manufacturing stuff. So really good work there by that team. In terms of our transfer program, we, we now, we've got all the data collected on all the different transfer pathways that we have, and now getting it up on a, on one website so it's consolidated, so students can go there and say, if I wanted to study computer science at Boise State, and I want to start at NIC, what classes do I need to take and how will they transfer, and, and how is that different from U of I? And so getting all that done and mapped out on a, on a website that makes sense is not an easy task, but they're, they've got all the data collected, and now they're working on doing that. And then finally, the mining engineering program, we, we started a two-plus-two discussion. Heckla came to us and said, can you do a two-plus-two program with, it was University of South Dakota and Montana Tech? And I said, well, we can do that, but I'd prefer to do it with U of I. So we've been working with U of I. U of I's agreed to start that program up. It's no real change for us. We already offer the pre-engineering and geology courses that are required, but getting, I, I think our real contribution to that was getting U of I to say yes to do it, and we're going to try to have it based up here, because, you know, I grew up in Moscow, and I can assure you there's no mining in Moscow. And so having it up here so that the, the students in Silver Valley can participate in that program, go home on, you know, maybe every night, but certainly on the weekends, and do internships and apprenticeships and go on field trips from here will be very meaningful. And it's not just mining engineering. They need everything from forklift operators to the, to engineers, and so we're working with them to try to produce the, the workforce that they need. In terms of student athletes, Sean's going to give you an update on the athletic program later, but overall, we had a good year, particularly given this was a transition, transition year to NJCAA. Our, our basketball teams, which really made the transition, continued, even though they traveled a bit more, they continued to perform well academically, which is, I think, you know, they are student athletes, so I think that's an important thing to, to keep in mind. And again, he'll give you more details on that. In terms of academic freedom and free speech, our free speech policy exists, and it's actually really good, but it's in facilities. If you look at the, the numbering scheme, it's in facilities, because it was originally drafted for managing protests on campus, and so that's handled, the, the request to do a protest is, was handled through facilities, so no one would ever find it. So we're going to renumber that and put it into an, probably a two series as opposed to a six series policy, but it's good, it's been reviewed. There's an organization called The Fire that reviews free speech policies, and we got glowing remarks on ours, so I, I think we're in good shape there. In terms of the academic freedom policy, it has been drafted by faculty because it's that, they own the academic freedom, so I wanted them to start with a policy. They've got it, they've drafted it. It's coming to PC, and it'll be forwarded to the Senate in September for action. September's their first work meeting, so they'll take that up in September, so we should have it by October, November, we should have it as a policy before the board. Strategic plan with our goals in place now, we're starting the next phase, which is to establish objectives and metrics. We're doing that, and we'll likely have a workshop in August to go into that in detail and kind of map out what our action is for the upcoming year. And then in terms of general update, looks like we'll end the year in great financial shape. You'll get a, a little bit more information from Sarah Garcia later, and more details in August when we actually have the year closed out through, through June. But really good numbers for the college and the community, and they've addressed a couple of the, the finances and the enrollment numbers, all go together, and it, we're, both were identified as issues that we need, we're, we should be concerned about with NWCCU, so we're in good shape there. And then we're expecting to hear about the Tech Hub grant very soon. NIC's portion of that is around $800,000. It's a $75 million grant that we're a piece of, and our, our portion of that is around $800,000, so we're expecting to hear back on that very soon. So Chair, that concludes my report. Sub to any questions?
All right. Thank you. Would anyone like to make any comments? It seems like we have a lot of good news here in either the president's report or the previous enrollment report.
Yeah, I have one. When it comes to that free speech, it seems like, I'm going to ask the administration, and maybe even put up for a board vote, if that's cool, to, when it comes to the free speech policy, to look at the, I guess, adherence or enforcement of the free speech self, self-enforcement organisms, because, I mean, that's great that we have a policy that even The Fire, you say they did review?
They did review it, yeah.
They do, but they're also the same organization, I believe, that had to get involved at North Idaho College because that same policy, how long has that policy been there?
2019, I think was the last time it was reviewed, yeah. But they reviewed it and gave it good, good remarks, and that was in response to The Fire's feedback, but after that, they got good reviews, so.
The event that you're thinking of, is it within five, five years, I think?
I don't remember the timeline.
I'm trying to think, but the same organization that had to get involved here to protect some individuals here's free speech rights.
I'll, I'll check into it. I'll check into it, but I, I think they've reviewed it and everything's fine, so.
I, I guess my concern is when that policy comes from the board, what I'm going to be looking for is what is essentially employee rights or mechanisms to keep North Idaho College adhering to our own policy. Other than just threatening lawsuits.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, any other comments? None noted? Okay, so we go to the information items. Center for New Directions, President Swain.
Yeah, so Louisa Rogers, you've seen her here a couple times in celebrating success, where she talked about the Center for New Direction, but she's never given a presentation for what the Center for New Direction is, and so she's going to cover that real quick tonight and just give you an idea of what, what she does with the Center for New Directions. So Louisa.
Thank you, President Swain. Thank you, Chair Wagner, Board of Trustees, for having me tonight. My name is Louisa Rogers. I run the center at North Idaho College, and for those of you not familiar with the program, I'm just going to kind of explain a little bit about what we do here on campus and across the state. There are actually six Center for New Directions in Idaho, one at each higher education institution that's publicly funded, and it's a pretty great program. We support three demographics primarily, single parents, displaced homemakers, and career pioneers. So I'm just going to explain what, what those demographics are. A career pioneer is someone who had been relying on a spouse's income as the primary household income, and then something happened to the spouse, whether that be death, or disability, or divorce, and now they are needing to maybe go back to school to figure out how to support themselves. No, sorry, that's a displaced homemaker. A career pioneer is someone who is interested in going into a field traditionally held by the opposite gender. So this would be a female student interested- So this would be a female student interested in going into diesel technology or welding or a male student interested in going into the healthcare professions, and then single parents. And really, the people who walk through our doors are truly looking for a new direction in life. Oftentimes, they are utilizing government assistance to survive, they're maybe living paycheck to paycheck, and they really want stability and they want to live a life of self-sufficiency. And so we are there to help them walk through that process. Real quick, the funding portion of Center for New Directions, all six centers across the state are primarily funded by the Perkins Grants and the Single Parent Displaced Homemaker Grants, and those are dispersed by the Idaho Division of Career and Technical Education. At NIC, we have one full-time employee, myself, and then a part-time employee.
Those grants are at the state level?
Yes, the Perkins Grant, I believe, is a federal grant that the state disperses.
Can't do it. Usually it's CTEs, federal money coming through.
So as you can see on this slide, the Center for New Directions has really grown the past two years. We've had a big uptick in people reaching out and utilizing our services, which has been fantastic. Some of those, the people connecting with us maybe just need short-term assistance, maybe they just need to update a resume or have assistants writing a really good cover letter, while others others need a lot of in-depth assistance that can be pretty long-term throughout their educational journey. So the services that we offer can be kind of broken into three different categories, career services, educational services, and support services. So throughout the year, we hold different workshops, advising and career services. Here at NIC does a great job hosting a career workshop for our participants. Like I said, we'll help with resume creation, cover letter creation. Some of our participants aren't computer literate, so applying for a jobs can be a barrier if it's online. So we'll sit down with them and teach them kind of how to apply for jobs online. We also do referrals through Idaho Department of Labor, Equus Workforce Solutions, two really great community partners for us. This April, we had our first-ever Women at Work event at Parker Technical Center where we invited women in the community who might be interested in going into a field within career technical education to come check out the different programs, meet instructors, learn about different support services, and it was actually a very successful event. And we've had women register for CTE programs because of it. The next category is educational services. So oftentimes, after we look at the career, the next step usually is a program, whether that be through NIC or through the Workforce Training Program. So we'll walk alongside them to apply, to get their FAFSA in, show them the different scholarship opportunities, which there are so much scholarships, opportunities available through the NIC Foundation and even community scholarships. We do campus referrals, so we're a connector to different campus resources. So if a student maybe needs a laptop in order to do school, we can connect them to the IT Department for a loaner laptop. If a student is struggling with math, we walk them over to the Math Education Center to meet the super-nice tutors that we have in that department. We, a lot of our students are first-generation college students, so we are able to introduce them to the Trio Program, which is an awesome resource. And then we hold different homework workshops. That was actually something new we did this past semester, where we had a tutor available to help with homework questions and someone else available to hang out with the kids. Because a lot of our single parents especially, that can be a big barrier to get homework done when there's a kid who wants your attention constantly. And then another, probably the most time-intensive thing that we offer is the support services. And this is really for the clients who are wanting individualized case management, where we're really able to help them with their goals and plan out how to get to that place of stability. So these case management sessions are pretty intense. We are teaching different life skills, we're holding our participants accountable and really witnessing tremendous growth. It's very, very cool to witness. We also have support groups on campus for the different demographics and family events. And this is the fun thing, you know, normally at a college campus, you don't see kids, but if you see kids walking around NIC, it's probably because they're with their parents who are going to meet with me. And we have family events where we say, bring your kids and come have a good time together. So these families get to know each other and build community with each other. And we live in a very, a time where things have become very isolated and people don't necessarily have community. And so this provides a really great place for community. Just a few highlights. This past year, we began the Center for New Directions Childcare Fund, and this is thanks to a $40,000 stipend that we received from United Way of North Idaho. We are, we were thrilled to receive this and pretty surprised. We've been able to utilize these funds by paying childcare facilities directly for childcare for students who are in school. Childcare is expensive and for a single parent, again, this is a barrier, right? There's not necessarily someone at home who can watch the kid while you're in class. We also were able to provide over $80,000 of direct assistance to the individuals we serve, and this was not from my budget because I do not have $80,000 in my budget. This was us utilizing community resources who want to walk alongside those in the Center for New Directions. A big community resource has been the Christmas for All Program through the Quarterlane Press that's run by Charity Reimagined. They have really stepped up and helped our students if they need car repairs or new tires or a desktop computer for a specific program, they see the need and they want to help. And then lastly, just the amazing faculty, staff, and community members at NIC and in our North Idaho community. We have a diaper closet that is always fully stocked of diapers of all sizes. Diapers are expensive. I don't know if the last time you walked through a diaper aisle at a store, but they get pricey and that can be a barrier for someone who's really struggling financially. And so our faculty and staff are always dropping off diapers outside my office, which is a huge blessing. And our community members, as the Center for New Direction has gained notice in the community, people have reached out and they want to help. And so we have really great support from people in the community who want to help our participants, and we're just so thankful. So that's my report for Center for New Directions. If you would like more information, you can go to the website. Are there any questions?
Go ahead, Todd.
Well, I'd been thinking about a question from the earlier presentations and then yours touched on the subject also, as you talked about giving assistance with the FAFSA. Within the last year, the new FAFSA was rolled out and I know there was a lot of bugs in that process and in fact, there was a concern in this this year in the fall about the late submissions as they were preparing for this academic year, '23, '24. Have those bugs all been worked out? Do we have any problems with that with our enrollment or what you're seeing in assisting with the FAFSA or has that system finally got cleaned up? Because I know it was, it was a real problem about a year ago as they rolled that new out and they were having problems into the fall. I haven't heard if we've gotten, if that's all been squared away or if the FAFSA still has some challenges.
I don't know if I'm the correct person for that. I will say that we, yeah, Tammy might have an answer. It seems from our side, helping people fill it out, things, applications are able to be submitted now for the upcoming year.
And we're receiving them, we're receiving them now. That was a problem where we were, things, things weren't lined, the data fields weren't lined up, we weren't processing processing things properly. I think all the bugs have been worked out. Tammy is probably the expert on that.
We are close to, I mean, yes, most of the bugs are worked off and we have been able to award financial aid for anybody who has a mission ICER. The one piece that we do know at this point is if there are corrections that need to be made, those won't be able to be made until the third week of August, so we are aware of that. But much progress has been made as far as awarding financial aid and it's important that we have, and I do want to just also note, we are aware that there are students that are continuing to, and they actually.
Grab a microphone, grab a microphones because I can't.
Tammy, start over for the recording so people can hear you from, that are on Zoom.
Oh, okay. So just to recap, as far as financial aid goes, yes, as Nick mentioned, the majority of those bugs are worked out. We are able to award financial aid, we have awarded financial aid to those folks that we have received ICERS for. That we are aware that if there is a correction that needs to be made to an ICER, that that will open up and be available to us the third week in August. Right now, that date is slated to be August 19th. And we are monitoring that and we do not foresee to have any problems with that. The one thing I did want to note is we received word from the state. The state is aware that there still are folks needing assistance for applying for financial aid. And so State Board will be here and we will be assisting folks on July 9th. We will have a FAFSA night, it will be from 4:30 to 6:30. It will be in Leakeyale Hall in the Learning Center. So there is also going to be a session that will be held at the public library. So if there are students in this area that are needing assistance, we do have those opportunities available. And we will advertise that to all of our students and applicants.
Hold that mic if you would. Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Chair, I have a follow-on question.
Go ahead.
There was also an issue, and I'm not going to get all the facts correct, so maybe this will make sense to you, where there was a data breach. And as the FAFSA was being sent out, the way the FAFSA is, is every college you put down gets that FAFSA. And there was some concerns at some point about how that was going out to multiple schools because the way the FAFSA had gotten corrupted, the apps or something, is that ringing a bell at all with with the problem that we had with some cybersecurity? Not us personally, but in the system.
No, no, I'm not aware of any problem there.
Chair Wagner, Trustee Benducci, you're talking about the way that the files were transferred to the actual individual schools.
Yes, sir.
And the Fed has changed that encryption method quite a bit on the mailboxes that we actually receive that information on. We've gone through three rounds with our ERP provider to actually shore that up. So from a technology checklist, we should be good on that part.
Okay.
But it was, it was an issue before. They've, they've fixed that with a lot more encryption, which makes it a lot harder for those individuals to get access.
Okay, I was wondering, because they had discussed that, and I couldn't remember the details, but in October, when we were at the national conference, that was something that came up. Because the FAFSA is kind of a unique thing, and if the data file gets corrupted or however that worked, because that file gets sent out to every single college that they put on their list, it could go to a whole bunch of different colleges, so.
Yeah, every, every college that you put down is, gets a copy.
Right.
Because you're a potential applicant there, right?
Yeah. And then I guess there's the question of storing that and the security of that too, because everybody gets it whether they wanted it or not. It's a, it's a push, not a pull.
It's, yeah, it's, they've, they've done a lot to really encrypt that information now in a couple of methods, so.
All right. Thank you, Ken.
Thanks, Ken.
Chair.
Go ahead.
Just back to the Center for New Directions, I was able to pull up your website and it's easy to share and your email's right there, so excited to refer people to you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else's comments? Whoops, okay. Looks like we're good. This is great. Thank you. One more thing NIC provides to the community.
All right.
Many. Right?
Sean can start walking up there. So we had a, as you, as I noted in the, in my report, had a good spring sports year and are transitioning in the fall to all NJCAA sports. And Sean will give us an update on spring and recruiting for fall.
Sure, thank you. Chair Wagner, Board of Trustees, President Swain, friends joining us. I'm going to give you a spring sports update like Dr. Swain said. I'll start out with the exciting spring that we had. It was a great spring for NIC athletics. And then I'll touch on what the fall looks like moving ahead for next year. So we'll start with men's golf. They won their sixth consecutive NWA championship. It's hard enough to win one championship, probably two, maybe even three, but six in a row is pretty difficult. So kudos to them and Coach Grove and the team on winning that NWA championship. Josh McCarrigan was the Player of the Year, and in addition to him, they had four All-League members from this season, so really a great season for men's golf. And again, congratulations to them. Women's golf had just as good of a season. They won the NWA championship as well this year. That was their first since 2016. Leila Jalil was the Player of the Year for Women's Golf. In addition to her, they had five All-League members and Russell was the Coach of the Year for Women's Golf as well. So congratulations to them on a, on a great season, so golf represented as well. We go to softball, as Dr. Swain said, finished in second place as the NWA runner-up. We were the East Region Champion at one point in the season, had a 37-game win streak. For those of you that kind of follow sports, you know, it's kind of a buildup, right? And that target on your back gets bigger. So, so kudos to them on that win streak throughout the season. We had four players named to the All-Tournament Team, 10 players named to the All-Region Team. Shay Chapman was the East Region Coach of the Year, and we had five players named to the NFCA, which is the National Fast Pitch Coaches Association All-American Team. So another great year for softball and a good way for all of our spring sports to, to finish up the NWA and then move forward next year to the NJCAA.
I have a question.
Yes.
When they get named to those various teams, is that just kind of for the record books or do they play a weekend with that team or what does that mean?
It's just more for a record book, it's just more of recognition for those student athletes who had really good years, so, yeah. Spring '24 and last fiscal year, some academic updates. The spring of '24, Athletic Department GPA was at 2.95. We had five teams with over a 3.0 GPA and we had 23 student athletes with a perfect 4.0 GPA. In terms of the '23, '24, if you take the fall and the spring semesters and put them together, we had a team, excuse me, a department GPA of a 2.94. So as you can see, the, the fall and spring and the year were pretty consistent with our GPA. I'd love to see a three as that first digit, but we'll work towards that. But I think that's a, that's a pretty good GPA for teams. And then again, for the whole year, we had six teams that had over a 3.0 GPA. We had 28 student athletes that graduated last year.
Mr. Chair, go ahead.
And the fall, that'd be volleyball?
Yep, fall is, well, in terms of GPAs, do you mean?
Yeah, you said it goes from five to six teams, so it says with over 3.0.
What it was is we had one other team in the fall, correct, that had a, that had over the year, had a 3.0 GPA. We, one of the teams must have had under for just the spring semester with 3.0. And then FY '25 update, so try to follow me here, okay? I think people, I got to take a PowerPoint class, I think people have this knack a little bit better than I do, so. We have, as of Monday, 179 total student athletes that plan to attend North Idaho College. Of those 179, 124 are scholarship athletes. That's out of a total of a potential of 152 scholarships. We have 55 students that are coming to NIC as non-scholarship students. So the 124 and 55 is how you get to the 179 total. And then we have currently 108 student athletes out of that 179 that are registered for fall classes. And without giving you a percentage, 99% are probably at 12 credits or higher. We do have a couple of exceptions, whether on waitlists or waiting to get into a class or just haven't finished what classes they want to take. Kudos to advising for those. They've, they've made an extra effort to really reach out to those students and get them registered. So we have a lot in queue as well that are waiting to register for those classes. The breakdown of that 179, we have 38 international. The breakdown of that 179, we have 38 international students, 37 which are on scholarship, one which is not. They represent 22 different countries. We have 56 out-of-state student athletes, 39 which are on scholarship. We have 30 WU, which I wish I could name every state, but it's sort of kind of the western part of the US. 17 of those are on scholarship. We have 32 Washington residents, 23 which are on scholarship, nine non-district, which are everyone in Idaho except for, I believe it's five counties that serve a, a community college district. And then we have five district, or excuse me, 10 district student athletes, six on scholarship. So, that's the breakdown as of right now. Some of those out-of-states could be WU students, but they have to fill out a WU application. But as of today, they're technically out-of-state students. So, hopefully that gives you a good idea of kind of the breakdown of the students.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Banducci.
All right, 179 total athletes. We have 152 scholarships in our quiver. We've now authorized 124 scholarships. You've given us the breakdown. I guess before I ask a couple of specific questions I have, are we, are we full up? In other words, is that 179 number going to increase in a sense where it will take up more scholarships? Or is anybody else that would add to that number going to be walk-ons, or, you know, pay on their own?
I think we'll have, you know, 28 scholarship more student athletes out there that we will sign. So, I think we'll add potentially 28 students to that 179. I could see the non-scholarship potentially going down, because again, they're, they're choosing to come here on their own accord while they have been recruited. There may still be last-minute options where students choose to go somewhere else if they get another opportunity. But I think that number could go up slightly just based on the number of scholarships we have remaining.
So, if I was to try to think of them in a context, like a preferred walk-on, but they may be offered a scholarship if there's still one available, that type of thing?
Possibly, yes.
Okay. Now, the other question I guess would be, when we get to the point where we've made a cutoff and determine how many of those 152 scholarships that we've allocated, and then we get the updated breakdown of the origination of the athletes, international, out-of-state, WU, Washington, non-district, district, which by the way, that looks like a lot of diversity to me. Are we going to then make an adjustment to our budget process? Because we've now funded at this moment, in worst-case scenario, all 152 scholarships at the international level or the maximum level for a scholarship. So, is there a point in time where we would do a reset to our, what our actual numbers are and what our actual expenditure will be? Because we kind of pie-nesquied it, and that became a little bit of a media fodder and fun for people. So, I'm wondering if we have a timeline where we might do a reset on that after we see the actual numbers. And then again, this is our first year, and it's a work in progress as we integrate back into the NJCAA. And each year could be a little bit different, but we'll get a baseline this next year. So, I'm kind of wondering, you know, otherwise, we've got what I would think would be just some excess in the budget. So, I'm kind of wondering how we'll deal with that.
We won't change the budget, but what we will do is, is track and just for, so everyone understands that out-of-state and international is the same tuition rate. The others, WU, Washington, and non-district are different. But, so for out-of-state and international, same tuition rate, it's the highest rate. That's what we based it on. So, we won't change the budget, but we'll actually adjust the numbers and track this for future and include this, probably with a little bit of, of flex in it for future years, because we don't know what the mix is necessarily going to be in out-years. If it's going to be more out-of-state or international or less, see how that plays. But we'll have, this will give us a good number to start with.
Follow-on question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Then if we're not going to reset, what's going to happen to the excess funds that were there? And that was one of the concerns that I expressed, is that we estimated so high that we're going to end up with this potential amount of money. I don't know if I want to call it a pot of money or not, but, or slush fund, but there's going to be some funds sitting there that are going to be unallocated because they're not going to be spent, because we're not going to need it for those scholarships. So, what's the, what's the end game for the, for the, that money there? Because that can be money that can reduce our budget if we're not spending it on the purpose that it was originally budgeted for.
Right, so that'll be the difference between the, the budget numbers and the actual. So, when the actual comes in, we're not going to, I mean, those dollars allocated for athletic scholarships, so if they're not spent on athletic scholarships, they'll, they will not be, the expenditure will not be reflected in our actual budget that comes out at the end of the year. So, then like this year, we'll have some surplus. Next year, we'll have some surplus that could be attributed to that. But it won't be spent on anything other than scholarships.
Okay. So, I was wondering if it's, you know, reallocated within the athletic department, if it's a clawback, if we use it to help balance the budget, since we've gone into some reserves and things. So, just kind of wondering where we're at on this.
Chair, hang on just a minute. So, could we have, I mean, as we go further into the year, you'll get more and more actuals.
Correct.
Can we have your, the actual impact on the budget, the numbers?
Sure.
Reported in August?
Sure, yeah.
Because you have more information.
Well, maybe not in August, but probably September, October, because things will still be, they'll still be working on signing contracts. So, my guess is probably September, October, we'll have really firm numbers.
Could you give us an update?
Sure, absolutely.
In August?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Of the real numbers?
Yep.
Mr. Chair, not to press the issue, but I think at the latest, it'd be September, because we actually start school in August. So, if people haven't signed their contract and enrolled, by the time we got to October, it'd be a little, little late academically. I don't know even how you'd get into the first semester. So, unless we're going to bring someone in at mid-year, which would only be a fall sport, like softball or golf maybe, I think we should have those numbers really secured in the August timeframe. So, we should be able to hear them in September.
So, October is our census, October 15th is our census date, which is when we shut down those changes. But you may have a, a student that is signed up as, and, and on scholarship, that drops out within the first couple of weeks and is replaced by one of the international walk-ons. And so, that international walk-on then gets a scholarship. So, then the numbers might fluctuate a bit. The students are here, but who's on scholarship? The difference between the 152 and the 179, those numbers may change a bit. So, it won't be, I think we can guarantee on October 15th what the numbers are, but there'll be some flex between August and October.
What I'm looking for is the ballpark, how, and we should be at what, you'll know within 95% or better?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
By August.
By August, yeah. We should be at 99.
But we won't have the precise numbers until a little later.
That's right. I'm looking for an update.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Did you have a?
Yeah, I mean, this board chose to invest in Athletics Department in this way at the expense of $2.5 million that we normally put in capital investment funds. And this was worst-case presented. So, to get actuals that come out and have, we already had a million-dollar carryover from last year's budget, to now turn that into a $2.5 million or whatever the actuals is going to turn into, it just seems, it just seems, I, I would just like that the budget just get readjusted in October then.
But, I mean, we don't, we don't spend the money on anything else. So, what happens at the end of the year?
So, then it shouldn't be a problem.
Is it, it will get, you know, if we have $2.5 million surplus next year, then we, we won't take any out of our fund balance.
It shouldn't be a problem if it's not going to be spent on anything else. I don't understand. So...
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
How about a, how about a compromise on this? Obviously, you have the database already built, and you're just adjusting it as someone's added or subtracted or changed. So, how about updates as we go along in the fall? And then we'll operate under the presumption that we'll get the final numbers in October. But it'd be nice, as we're going along in August and September, to know where we're at in that target.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
So, you'll put together a monthly update at each time?
Correct, starting August, September, October, yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
It should be pretty well locked in by October, yeah.
Chair Wagner.
Yeah.
This is a little different topic, still related to athletics. Sean, can you help me understand? There's 37 scholarships for international students, and it says 22 different countries. Is that actually outside of the United States, that there's 22 students coming from abroad?
Yeah, there's 22 different countries represented out of those. So, we may have multiples coming from one country.
That's actually 37 coming from abroad.
38, 38.
Well, it's 38, correct, 37.
37 scholarships.
Yes, correct.
Right. Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, I asked, so, so one of the challenges that we have is, how do you support students from 38 different countries? They have to have some basic English language capabilities, but, but they're likely not fluent. And so, what's more important to me than how many countries is how many languages are spoken. Because that becomes a challenge for the rest of the college to support the athletes. And so, if, if we have, if there are 22 Hispanic or Spanish-speaking countries, even if they're, have different dialects, that's much easier to deal with than if we have 22 countries representing 22 different languages.
And we don't, I know we don't have that. I couldn't give you a specific number, but I do know, you know, the four returners in that, you know, know English. I think there's a good portion that are, I'll say, English-speaking, but I don't want to give you exactly.
Yeah, right. So, that's, I asked Sean to work on that. So, he's, he'll get that report to us. But it's, it's great if they come from Australia, or, or England, or something like, or Canada. But right now, we just don't have that visibility. So, we'll get that information.
Anybody else, comments from anybody, anybody else? No? Let's go ahead to the next topic.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
So, Sarah's going to give you a quick update on finance. More to come, you know, we close out the year at the end of June. So, although, you know, we are technically close to that, it takes another two weeks after the end of the month before we close out the month. And so, by, by August, she'll come back and give you more, more details. But tonight, it'll give you a, a pretty nice picture of where we are closing out the year.
Thank you, Dr. Swain. Chair Wagner, trustees, and guests, I'm Sarah Garcia. I'm the Vice President for Finance here at North Idaho College. As Dr. Swain said, we, we just recently finished closing the month of May. We're about 95% through our budget for this fiscal year, and things are looking pretty good. So, this is our May actual versus our year-to-date actual versus the annual budget. So, we are, sorry, I have the wrong page. At the end of May, with one more month to go, we are at 96.9% of our revenue budget. We are on trend to meet, to meet our tuition budget, tuition revenue budget. We're on trend to meet our state and local budgets, and we're on trend to exceed our other revenue budget, which is mostly, as we've discussed multiple times, due to interest income higher than expected this fiscal year. We will know, as Dr. Swain said, we will know the exact amounts closer to August. We spend pretty much the entire month of July trying to lock everything down and finalize everything. So, we should know something by the August board meeting. Our general expenses, which is basically everything other than payroll, is currently at 106.3% of budget through May of this year. So, we're already over a budget. We are, there are various factors involved in that, many different factors involved in that. And, but between the savings and our personnel costs, which is the next grouping down, and the excess revenue we have from interest income, we have more than enough funds to cover that extra. The personnel expenses are at 80% of budget through May. Typically, this number would be closer to 90 to 95% at this time of the year. And this indicates that, again, like I said, there will be savings in, in our personnel budget. Combine these factors, put us in a strong financial position for the end of the fiscal year, and to start us up for next fiscal year in '25. For this fiscal year, we had budgeted to spend about $1.95 million of fund balance in order to not go in the red, and we're not going to need any of that. At this point, we anticipate that when all is said and done, we will add to the fund balance at the end of this fiscal year. Before I move on, any questions?
Any questions or comments?
Does that take that off the NWCCU checklist there?
We're in good financial.
We just got to let Moody's know. Whoever's talking to them is a little confused, apparently.
We, we, so, I also wanted to let you know that on June 1st, we were required to provide preliminary capital requests to the state. The requests involve very brief descriptions with an estimated budget. The final request will be due on August 1st, and will include the final detailed information for the project submitted, including a much more tightly calculated budget. For the preliminary request, we resubmitted the EVOC training course that we submitted last year. That was our Priority 1 request for the, for the, this would be for fiscal year '26.
Okay.
A whole nother year, a year from now. We also requested funding, the amount is yet to be determined, but we put a placeholder in there of about $2 million for a Phase 2 on the headland building remodel. So, the, the headland building remodel that we were granted a few years ago was just over $3 million. It really just takes care of the Diesel Bay itself and nothing else. There is, in the space adjacent to the Diesel Bay and the entrance of that building, there's opportunity to continue the, the innovation thoughts that we're working on with the Phase 1 in, in that Phase 2 space. So, we're asking for it as a Phase 2. And then, requests for these items will be presented by us to the Permanent Building Fund Advisory Council on October 1st. So, we, we do this preliminary June 1st. We have the final, the final is due August 1st. Then typically, it's me goes down and presents in front of the council, and then they prioritize and make recommendations in, at their November meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Being a little bit familiar with this process, over the last 12 years, we've had a lot of conversations about these things. I'm not sure what information you have or what you can speak to right now. A lot of times, the Permanent Building Fund will have a set pot of money, an amount, and then, depending on how much you're asking. So, I guess my two questions are, do you know what they set aside for this year to, for the folks making requests? And if you don't, that's okay.
Chair Wagner, trustee Banducci, no, I do not. I have not heard any scuttlebutt about?
Okay.
What the amount is.
Are we premature to even think about what sort of amounts that we'd be asking for, for these two requests? Or do we have any ballparks, or is it not appropriate to say those out loud right now?
I'm sorry, could you re-clarify what you're asking?
You want a dollar amount associated with each one of these?
If we can, but if it's premature or if we shouldn't, I'm okay. I was just wondering if that's something we could have an idea on.
So, last year for the EVOC course, we asked for $12 million.
Okay.
And I, and I said during my presentation that we have earmarked at this point $2 million for the headland remodel, Phase 2, but we need to work through the details of that before we submit a final request.
Okay. I was just, yeah, just looking for some ballpark ideas of what we're looking
They just want a general idea of what, what you're asking for, and a general idea of how much you need, so that they can start making their calculations.
Well, we got some traction with the EVOC this last year, and there are people that are, were paying attention to it and asking for more information and questions. So, I should think that's something that we'll hopefully get a good look at.
That's, I think, really critical for law enforcement up here.
Well, JFAC asked for more information. So, you know, I think it was Wendy Harmon asked for some more information. I think Mike worked on that.
Right.
Excuse me.
Yeah, basically.
Trustee Wagner.
Basically, they said, this is a really good idea, but they didn't have the money. I mean, it was just a question. They didn't have the money. But in terms of the analysis we did, and a lot of it came from Sarah, of course, it appears that it would, once it's installed, it would be self-funding. So, it wouldn't really cost the school anything. And it would save, well, for example, the state police want to bring everybody from Riggins, go down in Idaho County north to here if this would be set up. And the folks who have the current training session, center in Meridian, they're not opposing it. It's just a question of the money. So, if... So, if we work all the issues as fast as we can, and, and keep at it, what we're probably gonna end up is, with an excellent facility that might even make money, and saves the state a lot of money and hassle, et cetera. And there are, there are other issues I won't go into that are even more beneficial. So, I'm hoping that that gets set up, but we need information on that.
Well, if it doesn't buy the Permanent Building Fund, then we'd be back to going to JFAC. So, if we get to there, I think NIC needs to make nice with our legislators, and hope that we have friends down there and took care, particularly on JFAC, but we'll see where this goes.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, if I may, before I sit down, when Trustee Vanducci was asking about the FAFSA situation and how that impacts our students, we have been, my office, which is the one who tells students they haven't paid their bills, is working closely with the Financial Aid Office, and we are gonna do our best to honor and respect students who get stuck in, in, through no fault of their own. If they delay, if they're, if they're late getting their stuff in, I'm not gonna, we're not gonna help them with, a whole lot with that. But if they get stuck in the system, and, and it's no, through no fault of their own, we're gonna work with them to, to make sure that we don't penalize them for some system that someone else changed. So, I just wanted to make sure the, the board was aware of that.
Thank you for that, 'cause I was kind of wondering what the impact was on us as a school, and particularly on our students, and, 'cause a little bit I've read and seen, it can be pretty significant, 'cause the system's been a little bit upside down, so...
We'll be supportive, as long as they do their part, we'll do our part.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? If not, we go to the next step.
So, Human Resource Update. I got, I got a couple of slides to go through. So, one of the, one of the issues that the NWCCU addressed is the high turnover and, and change of leadership at, at senior levels, and so, I, I just say, as Kristen's pulling this up, the, the change we made last year to salary scales, and the change we made this year to salary scales, I think are having the intended impact here, and, and our, our, the number of departures has dropped significantly. So, you hit the next slide. So, this, the ninety shows what we anticipate through the end of the fiscal year, ninety departures, which is thirteen percent less than last year. I was real excited last month, 'cause it was at, sitting at seventy, and, and then all of the Head Start folks that aren't employed over the summer resigned, and so, our numbers jumped up to ninety. But, but we were tracking, and you'll see the, the trend line by month on the next slide, but, but we were, we're in great shape, and so, the, the dark line there is the 2024, and you can see that, with the exception of August, and, uh, January, and again, in April, our trend line this year was well below what it was last year, and you can see it projected out to be pretty substantially below where it was last year. So, I, I think our, our corrections to salaries has made a big impact, I think it will continue to have a positive impact, and, and the, the stability that has sort of returned is having a big impact on employee confidence and their willingness to stick around. So, I think this is a, a, a really good news for the board, and reflects how, how our employees are perceiving things going on here and the stability of the college. I think that's the, the only slide we have. There are, we already know about, and it was one of the slides, we already know about, I think, fourteen folks that are, that, they resign now, so we know they're leaving, but their effective date is not until August, which pushes them into the next fiscal year. And so, last year, the number was, I think, twenty-five, this year, it's fourteen. So, even the number of folks that are resigning over the summer has gone down, and that, that effect will affect next year as well. So, I think a really good HR report for this year, as a result of a, a lot of, a lot of different variables, but I'd say the, the eight percent raise last year, the three percent this year, have, have a, a, a very significant impact on those numbers. Any questions?
Any questions? No, we'll move on to the next step, enrollment update.
Okay, so, now, we're gonna, we're gonna try a live feed this time. So, this is Enrollment Dashboard, and I sent this out to trustees, this is something that all of the employees at NIC have, have access to, depending on where you are and the link, I, I sent it out to all the trustees, but if you have a slow link, it's not gonna, it's, it's not gonna load. This is a live feed from our, our, what do you call it, the BI.
Power BI.
Power BI.
Microsoft.
So, it, it's pulling this data as you, when you open it, so, it's, it's, this is a live feed, it's updated every morning around seven o'clock, so it's, it's not real-time, but it's real close to that for us, and it's, it's, it's about, you know, as, as good as we can get. So, some important points there is, we're up, as of today, five and a half percent over last year. That's year-to-year comparison with enrollment numbers. You see the blue line there is last year, the red line is this year, and so, you can track that, and if you hover over it, as, as Kristen was doing, you can see every, every day what that, what that is this year, what it was last year. We've added a column in the middle there, so that's also showing the previous term, and that's to the, to the day as well. So, really good data for us to be able to track, you can slice it and dice it however you want. So, a couple of things, right now, we're at twenty-seven oh one, so just, just broke twenty-seven hundred. You see that in the, in the top center. The, if, the, the next, if you look at last year, we didn't break twenty-seven hundred until two weeks from now, so two weeks in the future, so we're two weeks ahead of last year. Also, we, this year, we have not made any, we, we were asked by the school districts to hold off on doing dual credit, because when the students sign up for dual credit, they're all locked in, and then there's a whole bunch of shuffling of schedules, and even two-seventy-one may, you know, may go to four-day week, I mean, there's just a lot of shuffling around that happens in August and September, and if the students are signed up for a bunch of, of dual credit courses, and they've gotta change those, then it's a whole bunch of work to work with the registrar to change those classes here as well. So, they asked us to hold off. So, the big lump you see, kind of at the day sixty, if you can go back, go back the other direction, uh, yeah, right in, right in there, when that lump, that's, that's where we, last year, we were getting a bunch of students who signed up for dual credit. This year, we didn't do that. So, the cool thing is, now, you can go and turn off dual credit, and compare year-to-year without dual credit, and you'll see, we're up twelve point seven percent for, if you take dual credit out of both years, we're up twelve point seven percent over last year. And if, as you heard earlier, this number here, we're up fifty-two percent on new students. And that's a leading indicator of the community's support of the college. We're getting a whole bunch of new students in, and that's, so that's really important thing. So, to, you know, if you're, if you're thinking about taking classes now, sign up, because that, we're starting to fill up. So, so this is, this is important data for us, because this represents real humans being in the seat. And so, for, whether they're part-time or full-time, that, that's important for our, our academic planners on how many classes that we're offering, but from a budget perspective, Sarah makes the budget based on credit. So, if you click on, there's a tab down at the bottom, you click on credits, and you can see, now, this is with everybody included, credits were up seven percent. So, we're having more students sign up for, enroll in NIC, and they're taking more classes. So, those are two really good indicators of what's going on at NIC. And then, if you turn off the, the dual credit, you see we're up twelve point nine, almost thirteen percent over last year, and the, the new, the credits taken by new students is up sixty percent. So, those are two big numbers that, that, that we gotta, I, I think are, when, when you, when you talk about the things happening at NIC, and again, this is another thing that they, that the NWCCU noted, is our falling enrollments. Well, I got news for them, we fixed that. That, that is, we're really in great shape for fall. So, that's, you know, we, what's gonna happen between now and then? You heard Tom talk about all of the marketing and, and campaigns that are going on. While that's happening, we're also working on fixing some of the, the bottlenecks that we, we identify, improving our, the way students can sign up for advising, every, every step of the way, we're, we're addressing issues and, and planning, taking what we learned last year, applying them to this year, and, and continuing to learn and improve our processes as we go forward. So, it's having a real positive effect. I know, I shared this with our, our enrollment counselors in Cardinal, in Cardinal Commons, and, and now they check this every day, because they're, they're processing all these applications, processing all the enrollment documents, and they, they, they get excited, and they come in and look the next day to see, what, what did the, the work that I did yesterday, how did that affect the bottom line for today? And so, I think everyone is watching these numbers, everyone's excited, everybody's participating, and, and everyone is contributing to ideas about what's out there. We learned just, well, a day prior to the day, recently, there are three hundred and thirty students that have already, they've registered for classes, they're in their, they're, they're in their shopping cart, they saved them, but they didn't hit submit. And so, that's a step, it, it's deceptive, we're, we're working on fixing that, so that all they gotta do is go back in and hit submit, and they're registered. So, three hundred and thirty more students are out there, and another eleven hundred, thirteen hundred, eleven hundred continuing students that have, they're signed up, they're ready to go, but they haven't registered for classes yet. So, eleven hundred more students out there that are ready to go. So, things are really looking good for enrollment for the fall, and I, I, you know, we're, our goal is two percent, but we may, we may beat that. Two percent increase over last year, we may beat that, and that would be the first time we've had two, summer and fall consecutive increases in about, since about two thousand nine or ten. So, it's, it's really good news for our enrollment numbers, and I think this is another issue that we can check off with NWCCU.
Okay, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment.
Yeah.
Dr. Swain, that's a great report, thank you, and congratulations.
Thanks. I, I think everybody's participating on this one, so...
Yeah, this is great.
If, if you're out there and you haven't signed up for a class yet, do it quick. And all the, you know, anybody in the room, non-degree-seeking students, if you just wanna take a class, you, you know, like, you, you, that, that algebra that kicked your butt in high school, if you wanna come back and learn it better, sign up for a class, we'll take you, we're happy to have you, and, but do it soon, because classes are filling up.
Chair Wagner.
Trustee Zimmerman.
President Swain, I just wanna tell you, I did try to break the dashboard, even though you said we couldn't, and I was unsuccessful, but I think it was really great, I loved interacting with it, de-selecting different things, seeing how the data changed and how the numbers changed, it was fabulous.
And that's, our, so, two years ago, we didn't have this, so, so, trying to predict what it was, and that's why we only go back two years. So, Chris Brewer and his team, they're in the recruiting and retention meetings as well, and they're, they're looking at what we're doing, what we're using, and say, okay, we can add, add this and take this away, 'cause nobody's using it, so it's a dynamic process, it's, it's great, and, and again, I'd, I'd say hats off to Lloyd Dooman for, for really pulling all that together, he's, he's really the guy that I give a lot of credit to for, for making this happen, so, thanks.
Okay, that's great, and I've, I've noticing a whole series of these types of internal improvements, and that's really good. Any more comments? None noted, okay. We're down to the consent agreement.
Chair Wagner.
Agenda. Go ahead.
I just have a motion, I'd like to strike some of the lines from the minutes on page three.
Go ahead.
Well, I think, as we've come a long way with these minutes over the years, and this, one of the goals is just be factual, not narrative setting, and there's some of the lines that I believe just are unnecessary for the minutes, and so, I'll just read, starting with the new business executive session actions, there's a first paragraph, second paragraph, going to the third paragraph, "Trustee Corkle made the motion, which was seconded by Trustee Zimmerman. Following discussion, Chair Wagner called for the vote." And then, either need to add initially, or the motion passed with three votes, so you need to, I, I propose we strike that part, all the way down to the bottom of the page, where it says the motion passed.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, so, I motioned to strike the first, the motion passed with three, all the way down to when it starts again, the motion passed with four votes. So, anything between those lines, I vote to strike, so, for your clarity, that's what I might.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, discussion? No discussion?
I, I think, can we ask Colton to weigh in on that, because I, I'm concerned that I, if, if this, if that's fine and everybody wants to do it, I, I don't have a big issue with it, but I, I think this accurately reflects what happened, so if that's not necessary, then fine, striking it, but I, I don't...
So, at the meeting, the motion was recognized by the chair to pass with a certain count, vote count, so that's all the minutes need to say. So, if we wanna hold off this thing and have our attorney, work with the attorney to do for legality, then I recommend we just not put him on the spot, but otherwise, we proceed with this.
Well, let's ask, would you comment on this, or, or if you don't want to, that's fine, we'll, we'll make other arrangements.
Okay, as I understand the motion, it is to strike from the sentence immediately preceding the first vote, to the sentence immediately preceding the second vote at the bottom of page three. Yes. So then, it would just read, under new business, paragraph one and two would remain unchanged, the first two sentences of paragraph three would remain, and then, everything would be deleted until the very last paragraph, the motion passed with four votes in favor, one vote against.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Boils. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Mr. Boils, could you repeat that one more time? I wanna make sure I'm, I'm tracking on this correctly. Sorry to have you have to do this.
Under new business, paragraph one and two remain unchanged, the first two sentences of paragraph three remain unchanged, and then everything is deleted until the last paragraph of that page, the motion passed with four votes in favor, one vote against.
Mr. Chair, may we have a moment to review this?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you.
Is that clear, Suzy? You got that? Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I'd like to ask why.
Go ahead.
The goal is, like we said before, not narrative setting, just factual, as the chair recognized the motions that pass. Simple.
I don't think it could be any more factual than it already is. In actuality, it's no different than the second paragraph on this page.
So, we're receding back into narrative setting, from my perspective, and what I would, or, Mr. Chair, if I may speak.
Any other comments? Go ahead.
It seems to me that if we were to move forward with omitting what's already here in the minutes, that that is disingenuous, and it is not factual. These are just facts, there's nothing, there's no color here at it at all, it's simply stating factually what occurred. It also seems a little self-serving for Trustee McKenzie to be asking for this to come out of the minutes, because it reflects directly on him, he asked for a revote, basically, and that's what happened. There's nothing wrong with what happened, it's factual, I think we should keep it. There's nothing wrong with what happened, it's factual, I think we should keep it.
Okay, and I'm seeing in, this is a comment, I'm seeing in my, oh, okay, hang on. Okay, I'll retract that, I was looking at something else.
So, the, Chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
There was no revote, as I recall from my memory, as the meeting minutes reflect, there was a correction of my vote, of how I wanted my record to stand. So, the meeting minutes give the appearance, as a fellow trustee just recognized.
Oh, okay, so, the question is, what you, we had a vote, and then we asked you if you wanted to change your vote, and you said you did, is that two votes, or is that one vote? That's the question.
Of the board.
Right.
That's a great question, and there was no other votes by other people on that topic. So, to me, it falls under discussion, and it's unnecessary, and again, narrative setting.
Do you have any comments?
The record is, of the video, still stands.
Right.
What the minutes are aiming for is if motions pass, if they not passed, what are the votes for it, and such. So, as you recognize, at the end of that meeting, the chair recognized for the one, that's how it should be done.
Right, so I only recognized it once, right?
True.
Well, I, so, my recollection is, there was a 3-2 vote, trustee McKenzie said, can you ask Colton to read the, read the motion again, after reading it again, ask for another vote, and it ended up four to one, which I think is what is reflected here. So how we characterize that, I don't, I don't, I don't have a preference, I just, I think that this accurately does it. If we want to change the minutes, that's fine, we still have the video record of it, but I just want to say that I don't think this is editorializing, I think this accurately reflects it, so.
If we're going to put every word in conversation and events in the meeting minutes, then we should do that, that's not what we all agreed to at the beginning, when we were setting up the meeting minutes.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair. Not trying to be argumentative here, but I think we'd need to look at the video, because I think you might be incorrect. I do not believe a second vote was held, because I was kind of paying attention to that, and I happened to be sitting to the right of trustee McKenzie. And Mr. Boils reread it, as I recollect, and then he asked if he could change his vote, he said he, it was yes, he said, yeah, I want to, he changed it, chair Wagner said, okay, then the vote's four to one. So, from a technical point, this would be incorrect, because there was not a second vote held, and I don't recall voting no twice.
That's exactly the.
That's how I remember it, too.
Okay.
And it's not critical, because the end effect is the same. So, any further discussion?
I recommend that we look at the videos.
That's fine, let's look at the video. Let's not take a positive and turn it into a negative. The case is dismissed, so we'll reflect it in the minutes, however the board wishes to do, I don't think it matters either way from a legal perspective, but.
Can we move forward with these minutes, and if the minute, if the minutes, if the amended minutes reflect what the video says, there's no need for these board minutes to come before us again. So let's move forward with my motion, and we can always amend them in the future.
I think that's fair. We move forward, we'll go back and look at the video, if the video shows something different, then we'll bring it back and amend the minutes.
In August.
In August.
So, there's a motion before the floor to amend the minutes as they stand, removing the lines that I've requested.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second?
Yes.
Let's go ahead and revoke. Ayes?
Ayes.
I'll say aye, just to correct it technically.
Nays?
Nay.
Nay.
It looks like we have three ayes, two nays. We'll go ahead with the condition in the motion that we'll review it, and if there's an error there, we'll change it.
And what we'll do is, is, once a video, we'll get to the video, get to that point, and share that out to every, all the board members, so they can review it, and then if we need to amend it in August, we can do that.
Sure, sounds great, that way they'll be accurate, for sure. Okay, so, back here to the list.
We still need to approve the minutes, or just the motion to amend?
Yeah, okay, so, we need a motion to approve.
As amended.
As amended.
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we got, need to go ahead and revoke, ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nays?
Nay.
Nay.
Thank you, passes 3 to 2. Again, we're going to correct it if there is an error, the intent is to make it as accurate as possible. Okay, so, President Swain, you're going to look at the new business policy on equal opportunity.
So I'll bring Colleen Hamilton up, she is our kind of interim chief human resource officer, she spent a lot of time going over this policy and updating it, and has a brief presentation to go over and kind of tell you how we got here, and then where we're at, what's in the policy, so, Colleen.
Good evening, Chair Wagner, President Swain, and trustees in the community. My name is Colleen Hamilton, and it is my honor to present an update with regards to policy 3.0201, the affirmative action and equal opportunity. Included in your board book is a redlined version of this policy and procedure with its revisions. Prior to the review of the policy changes, I would like to share with you the federal and state laws that apply and that are now cited in the policy. Equal employment opportunity is a federal law, it protects job applicants and employees from discrimination, and applies to all types of work situations. An affirmative action plan is required to be established by federal contractors and subcontractors. North Idaho College is not a federal contractor or a subcontractor, therefore the college is not required to have an affirmative action plan. The last time the college was a federal contractor was over 10 years ago. The college's acceptance of federal financial aid does not affect its federal contractor status, and there is no anticipated participation by the college in a federal grant program that will change the college's inactive federal contractor status. Further, the Idaho Human Rights Law, section 67-5909, section 1, paragraph 7, states that nothing in this section shall be interpreted as prohibiting action that must be taken to establish to maintain the eligibility of any federal program where ineligibility would result in the loss of federal funds to the state. The most recent changes of federal and state laws include Supreme Court ruling that banned affirmative action in college and university admission processes. That ruling does not impact this policy, as this policy is for applicants and employees in their employment. Idaho bill, Idaho House Bill 440 amended the existing state law that bans preferential treatment based on race, color, ethnicity, or national origin in public employment or public education. This page offers a summary of the policy changes, these are referenced as redlined in the policy in your board book. The most significant change to this policy and procedure is the removal of the affirmative action. The title of this policy is now equal opportunity. The equal opportunity policy applies to employees, and now cites all federal and current state laws. We added a purpose for this policy that expresses the college's commitment to comply with the federal and state laws as an equal opportunity employer. All references to students were removed, as this policy directly relates to employment, and any reference in the current policy where it was applied to equal opportunity, equal employment opportunity, was retained. Any questions?
Trustee Banducci.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I have a couple. One, just to start out with, one of the things that we had asked for and appreciated is when there's an accompanying procedure that supports these policies, if it's being updated, deleted, added, those sorts of things. And there is one that was provided with this, but everywhere on it, it says to be deleted.
Yes, because the procedure referred to establishing an affirmative action plan.
Okay.
Now that affirmative action is not in the policy, that procedure goes away, there is no procedure for this policy.
Okay, that was going to be my follow-on question, then, because since this went away, and I, I get it, because it talked about it being right at the title, dissemination of North Idaho College's affirmative action policy, which we don't have anymore, so the question was, if this was being deleted, is there something replacing it? And you've said, no, because it's not required, not necessary.
Exactly, because it's not required. The great thing is, is that we have it. If you ever need, if we ever need to put it back together again, it's there for at least a reference.
I have a follow-on question, sir.
Go ahead, and then I'll.
Okay.
Hold on, she just, is affirmative action not in the policy?
I'm actually headed, I'm headed right there, give me just a second, partner. Thank you. Looks like trustee McKenzie was reading my mind. When I reviewed this, and I noticed the, I guess, I'll say the deletion of the references and the terminology affirmative action, and we've seen where affirmative action is no longer appropriate, saw the slides, yet there's kind of a catch-all paragraph on the last page titled affirmative action, and it says that we have specifically legal obligations as a recipient of federal funding and federal contractor, and it goes on, but I thought you just said we don't, and A, we're not a federal contractor, and we haven't been for over 10 years, so help me understand what that paragraph means.
Correct, and the reason for that paragraph goes back to Idaho Human Rights Law, where it says that that law does not prohibit any institution from receiving the federal funds if it does not have an affirmative action plan.
So go back a slide.
If an affirmative action plan was needed, then we may have to put it, we may have to put it together if it's required by, and we're, we know that we're going to be a federal contractor then.
Okay, okay, I understand where this is going, then, and what that's supposed to be doing. That's why I wanted, just to make sure I was clear in understanding.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
So we have a choice, if that comes up, of going after the grant, or going after the contract, or not, and if we do, then we would have to reinstate, if required, reinstate an affirmative action plan and policy, but we don't anticipate that happening, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments?
Yeah, I have some, Chair.
Go ahead.
If I could give me a moment to... I think this policy is much improved from what we had before. I do think, I do, I guess, maybe hope to see even more work for the second draft that comes here to the board, when that does come. I guess, help me, when I, when I read this affirmative action, I understand basically what this paragraph is allowing the college to have flexibility for when that day comes. Is that?
I wouldn't say that it's, that it's flexibility, I think that it's an understanding that if we were a federal contractor, we understand that this may be a requirement. That's what, that's what I would read from it.
Mr. Chair, would it be possible, for context, clarification, to explain what that means to be a federal contractor? For some that may be wondering what the heck that is.
Yeah, so.
Or an example, maybe.
The most common that I think that, that we realize as federal contractors are the Department of Defense and Lockheed Martin, that supplies the Air Force.
Sure.
With planes, right? So that's a federal contractor, goods or services, right? So that's, that's the best definition that I can give.
So you're saying, if the school provided goods or services directly to a government agency, we would be a federal contractor?
Correct, however, we have a choice as to whether or not we apply for that, right? Because just as we apply for grants, we understand what the requirement is going to be, so we have a, we have a choice whether or not we want to apply for that, to be a federal contractor.
And I'm guessing that that excludes local area on aging, and Head Start, even though those are federal programs.
Those are grants.
When we do that. And you indicated, and I'm trying to think back, my historical databank here, what would we have been doing as that 10-plus years ago? I'm trying to remember when I first came on the board, what we were doing as a federal contractor.
Sarah may know.
Sarah, help me out, I don't remember what would have been designated as that. Just out of curiosity.
Not to put her on the spot or anything.
Yeah, sorry, but what did we do as a federal, because I understand her example, I was on the Air Force for, you know, this many years, and been in the planes that those people made, so what did we do?
Yeah, Chair Wagner, trustee Banducci, I worked very closely with Colleen on the federal contractor, I do not remember.
Fair enough.
What it was, but.
I don't either.
We were very, very specific, because we know we have Head Start, we have Area Agency, we have all these different types of federal funding, and we wanted to make really, really sure that we were doing our due diligence in identifying ourselves as a contractor. I, I don't want to, I don't want to guess, but.
I can't imagine us getting in that business.
If the board wants to know, I think also at the same time, some of the definitions have changed over time as well, so it could have had something to do with, like, the way the veterans' bills ran, or something like that. So that seems to be clicking in my head for some reason, but if the board would like to know, I'd be happy to research and provide the information.
I don't, I don't see that need, and I don't want to push you to try to speculate.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, any further discussion?
Chair, I have some, still.
Go ahead.
Initial feedback regarding this affirmative action paragraph, it seems like, because there's kind of a misunderstanding with the state of Idaho and other places at the federal level, can we put information, like, in the policy or an accompanying procedure for people to be aware when affirmative action is present at North Idaho College, and information that we are not a federal contractor, or just, like, right here, you know, for, I don't want to get into your weeds, but however you want to do it, you know, for information on our affirmative action plans that are present at North Idaho College, you know, see this procedure or policy, so people, because as I was reading this, it still made it seem like it's still present on campus, when your presentation right now indicates to me that it's not. So somehow, if it's present on campus, this policy needs to inform the community, how, when, where, what, why?
It is not present on campus.
So that either just, I don't know if that's wise to state that in the policy, but clarify that, I guess is what my input is.
Okay.
All I would say is, at first blush, I had the same impression, but then, at first blush, I had the same impression as trustee McKenzie. That's why I needed some clarification, and I had the benefit of the presentation of this, but as a standalone paragraph, somebody else without the benefit of the rest of this, that paragraph may not make sense, maybe.
So you're asking for a statement to clarify it for layman as to what is really happening, because obviously, I mean, what I'm hearing is people are agreeing with, pretty much with the policy, at least for the first read.
Clarify it.
But want, but need a clarification.
Yeah.
And then they won't get any questions that'd probably mean less work for you, I would think, I would hope.
Yeah, and bring that back for a second read, that's fine.
Right.
It should be.
Small.
Yep.
And there is no procedure, because it's not present here, to accompany affirmative action?
Nope.
And, yeah. All right, just in general, Chair, you can go to somebody else, but I have a different topic on. topic on the same policy.
One last question, I guess, then.
Go ahead.
Since we, in the force, in the future, as we can foresee, it's, we're not going to have affirmative action, we're not going to be a government contractor. If, if that paradigm changed for some reason, would we need a procedure to support that, or is that kind of just OBE at this point, not to worry about it unless?
I'm sorry, I had trouble hearing the question?
If it, if at some point in the future, if for some reason, we became a federal contractor, and affirmative action was applicable for some reason, would we need to have some procedure to go with that? Could it be just developed at that time, and we don't worry about it now?
It would actually be a requirement at the time that we're applying to be a federal contractor.
Okay.
So, we would have to supply what, that we were, that we did have an affirmative action plan. They, they actually don't request it at that point, but we would have to, we would have to check that box.
Okay.
So, we would have to come back to the board prior to making that, taking that action to apply for whatever project it was that would make us a federal contractor. We'd have to come back to the board and say, "We're applying for this, do you want to apply for it? And if you do, we have to approve this new plan and, or policy and procedure."
And that answered my question. That's what I was wondering, if the, if the development of that would be contingent on moving forward.
That's, that's why she mentioned earlier, that really, all the things that we need for an affirmative action plan exist, and we're taken out of the policy, and the affirmative action procedure exists, we've just undeleted and put it back in place and get it approved by the board.
And she did speak to that, so, okay. So...
Can, if it has to come to the board, could the policy kind of explain for any affirmative action plan to...
We'll clarify that paragraph.
All right.
Okay. Are we ready to move on?
No, I have more, anyone else, but I'm happy to. So, okay, Chair, if I may, I got a new question. In the beginning part, it, it, did, was there any assessment if we should separate? So, it looks like the affirmative action was even dropped from the policy name. Was there any assessment if we just have our own affirmative action policy, and then equal opportunity policy?
It's not, so, we stripped out all affirmative, it's not required. So, there's no need for a policy. We, we will have it, like, on file from the, from the red-line version, but there's no need for a policy, there's no need for a procedure, affirmative action goes away. It just goes away.
It, so, it just doesn't exist, so, if we've stated it someplace, it would just be confusing.
Right. Actually, that last paragraph is just a placeholder.
Right. If, if we have to have one, we, we recognize that we have to, in those circumstances, and we would, we would institute one, we'll just clean up that last paragraph. But there's no need for us to have an affirmative action policy at all.
Okay, then, it seems, okay, well, as you worked that second paragraph, we'll see how it is.
Okay.
No, I still have more. So, in the second paragraph, statement of intent on equal, well, here, I'm going to, my first question that I wrote out, too. Many people, like, confuse, or I've come across many people who have confused equity with equal opportunity. And I just, I'm afraid that this policy doesn't do enough to clarify the difference between those two words. And there's a big difference between those two words.
But, but we're following, like, this follows the federal guidelines. It's equal opportunity, it's not equity. We're not, we're not doing equity, we're doing equal opportunity, and that's it. There's no, I, I think, including that just confuses things, because it is not, it's not required. It's another one of those buzzwords that just, it's, it's a trigger, we don't, it's not required, we don't need it, it's equal opportunity, it's a federal requirement. Just keep it simple to that focus, I think is the, that's what we're trying to do here.
So, I agree, that it could even be just like a one-sentence clarification that, like, that's two different things.
I, yeah, so, like, all we're addressing is equal opportunity. If you put in equity or something like that, we're not, that's, that's not the role of the policy, it's not to address equity, it's equal opportunity.
If I can paraphrase, I think you're telling us that's a trigger word.
Yeah, let's just leave it out. Like, we, it's not, it's not required, we just leave it out.
Well, just...
Because equity is different from equal opportunity.
Sure.
I know, but a lot of people either intentionally or accidentally confuse them, and it just seems like it'd be an easy clarification that, just saying that equity is different than equal opportunity.
I suspect that the people that are confused by equal and equity are not going to be dissuaded by us trying to define it in this policy.
People do gymnastics, I'll bet, I can agree. Well, it, it just, not, not to belabor, but I'll just deliver my last thoughts on it, is equity is kind of aligned with affirmative action, which is at the last paragraph to this thing. And so, it just furthermore builds that justification for able to be confused, but, okay. Give me a second. In the statement of intent on equal opportunity, let me see, where is it?
Bottom of the first page.
Yeah. So, statement of intent of equal opportunity, the first paragraph of that portion, NIC prohibits discrimination of any type and affords equal opportunity to applicants for employment and employees without rate regard to race, color, religion, national origin, sex, and then it goes into parentheses and defines even with age, too, and disability status. Why are we explaining sex in the policy, and not the other terms?
Trustee McKenzie, that is as a part of the equal employment opportunity law regulation. They actually have those further definitions within. And because a word can be defined by others, the federal government has decided to add to those words, specifically, though, for age. And, and because of the additional acts that are recognized above, that are addendums to the equal employment opportunity, that's the reason why they're listed, because there is a Pregnancy Act, right? And there are different, so that's the reason why they're listed, and age, 40 or older, is specifically listed because of the Age Discrimination Employment Act, if that helps.
So, I guess, when it's the procedure company, I mean, I'm used to policies kind of just identifying, and then the procedures get into the details. It seems, it seems a lot of detail in, at this policy level. And is there any that North Idaho...
If I may, trustee McKenzie, you know, President Swain and his staff worked to develop this policy, and it was promulgated to us about six days ago, and there's a lot of action in the federal courts in this area right now. And six days prior to that, a Sixth Circuit Court made some rulings on this issue related to the department's action, whether they're arbitrary capricious, if they violate the state's sovereignty, parents' patria, whether they exceed the authority of the department. And so, right now, Idaho is one of 20 states that challenged, preemptorily challenged this rule, and it, preliminary injunction was granted, and that's specifically related to the gender identity and expression and sexual orientation issues in the Title IX policy. And so, another court in Kentucky, another six states, have an injunction on this area as well. And so, obviously, we have the interplay between the state law and the federal requirements, and then the prior administration with this administration, and then the current rules and injunctions that apply to certain states and not other states. And so, this is an issue that we'll be working with HR to resolve on how to accurately reflect that in a policy. Because obviously, if the, the requirements for gender identity or expression and sexual orientation become good law, even though it's a rule, then we would want to allow the school to accommodate that federal requirement, but not necessarily make it one way or the other in the event an injunction like this occurs. And so, this is one of the areas of the policy we'll be having further discussions on, to figure out how to refine it to comply with federal law. But just so you know, that is in flux right now, and there is an injunction that applies to the state of Idaho that came out about 12 days ago.
But the stuff that's in there comes right out of the federal...
No, it comes out of federal rule, but they're enjoined from enforcing it right now.
So, what you're saying is a dynamic right now, so, I mean, that raises a question to me, how much do we want to get into it right now, and maybe leave some...
It just looks like the administration's adding things that...
Well, no, they, they pulled this precisely out of the Title IX rule that came from the department's guidance, and the department's guidance was challenged, and Idaho was one of the states that challenged it, of 20 states, and there's an injunction prohibiting the enforcement of it.
Yeah, so, my next question is, is there certain categories of that sex definitions? If they're part of Idaho statutes, or if some things NIC's administration is adding additionally, which sounds like, sounds like you all will be getting into, so.
We may have to come back with updates.
Yeah, well, I guess the point here is, it's an accurate reflection of the federal law, but the federal requirement has been enjoined.
All right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. One quick question. In the citations, under the legal citations, because it is a recent ruling under the Title IX, it still says Title IX of the Educational Amendments of 1972, but that would be inclusive of anything that's been recently issued, or the new rules and that sort of thing.
Yeah, no, this is a great body of work here for the legal citation, because it is quite voluminous, and it, it started in 1965 with Executive Order 11375. It's been amended several times, and so, it's as amended there, yeah. And if you want the citation of the case, I'm happy to provide that to anyone. The Kentucky Sixth Circuit case is the Tennessee versus Department of Education, and the other case is Tennessee versus Cardona, and that's the East District of Kentucky.
So, this language is subject to court action at this time, I would say.
That's correct.
It's accurate today.
It's accurate today.
Subject to court action.
I don't...
So...
All right, one more. Just one more feedback on the authority and responsibilities at the bottom paragraph for the second, third page, second page. It just seems, it goes all the way down to the directors and departmental administrators are similarly responsible within their areas of jurisdiction. It just seems delegating the equal opportunity to the appropriate levels, I just want to bring that to your attention, too, that it seems, I don't know, when I read that part, it seemed quite further delegated down a way. And I do like the part where everyone expects to assume responsibility for assisting, but, but also, like, just how much gets delegated to the low, to how low of a level.
Trustee McKenzie, if I can, what I had said before with equal, equal employment opportunity, and how it is every aspect of a work situation, so, hiring, promotions, training, compensation, benefits, termination, applicants, there, it's all a part of it. So, there, there wasn't, there wasn't an intent to say that we're delegating the authority, we're delegating responsibility to everyone within the college. Because this, at the, at the base of this, we cannot discriminate, applicants or employees, we have to give them equal opportunity.
So, you're delegating that because the people who would be in contact with potential issues...
Frontline.
Are frontline, and you need to identify that they're responsible to be in compliance with the statutes.
Correct.
So, if I could ask you just a follow-up question, on the same topic. So, if the directors are responsible, and then the vice president, or an officer, so, and then the vice president is also responsible, and then the president is responsible for implementing, maintaining, monitoring this policy, so is that, is it fair to say you have three people that are responsible, then?
Yes, because...
Three levels.
Three levels, yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Well, it would be fair, I would think, at any point of contact, at whatever level, the point of the delegated responsibility is that, in theory, there's a liability to the college at every level, because when you're at that interface point, if the employee doesn't act accordingly, then someone could have a complaint.
So, you're, you're just adding in the levels of responsibility, so you can hold people accountable for being in compliance, that's it?
Correct. And I have participated in new employee orientation, I have participated in a review of the supervisor training, I've also participated in a review of employees training other employees, and how that invitations are sent out. So, I can, I can commit that the organization, that it's not two people that are responsible for this, it goes throughout the entire community at North Idaho College.
Okay. Anything else? Let's, this is just the first reading, so, and I, I assume both of you would accept any further input if people had concerns during the intervening time before the second reading of, with the next one.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Colleen.
With the next board meeting. Okay, so, we're on to public comment.
So, recognizing that we are not a political organization, and recognizing that we still have to work with the legislator, legislature that is, and recognizing the state of our current legislature, and what it will probably be come Election Day, I'm curious if the board and/or administration has considered the impact that the Republican Party changes that were made this last week, not allowing funding for higher education, what impact that's going to have on our programs like the 2+2 that we're working on, the plans for the CTE and the workforce folks being able to get to a degree-seeking accreditation for associates, what that's going to do for our bottom-line budget for, for Sarah Garcia. I don't know how much comes from our state government. I don't remember off the top of my head, but I remembered it was quite, quite a chunk of our, our budget comes from, from those folks. Recognizing also that they, they want career and job-ready folks, they're not looking for higher education above K-12 to be funded. So, I'm wondering if anyone on the board has given that any thought yet? I know that accreditation still takes priority, but I, I see that one as the next big balloon on the, on the horizon, so. Food for thought, folks.
I'll just pull it out. I had a two-minute statement, but I'm, I'm going to forego it. I'd just love, like to offer a short prayer. Father in heaven, the same that you are the one who determines the rise and fall of nations, you will determine the rise or fall of North Idaho College. I just pray that you would bless this institution, that it might continue to be a place where people can learn vocational skills, and that it would also be a place where you would be known and glorified. I pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Jamie Berube, did I pronounce it correctly?
Close enough.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jamie Burby, and I would like to second what Karen Shepler had to say. There were board members that said that they did not want to support state, local funding, public education, past K-12. And thank you for doing that, because now we know what your mission was. Your mission is to get rid of the college and... Your mission is to get rid of the college and make it a private institution that people can't afford. And I'm appalled. And when you talk about finances and how the Chamber of Commerce was a, you know, a conflict of interest, I think this is a huge conflict of interest. If you're a board of trustee and you don't want to fund public, use public dollars to fund this institution, then you have a choice. Step down, because that's a conflict of interest.
Remind folks that keep it on the agenda.
Yeah. No, they said budget.
Yeah.
Where did the prayer?
My name is Robert Shepler, I'd like to talk about the budget concerns for a minute. The last meeting of the Board of Trustees, there was a big concern about the $4 million cost of moving from the NWA to the NJCAA for all of our sports. This was a process that was actually started back in December, the December 21st of 2022 meeting, where it was brought up by then-chairman Greg McKenzie to change NIC Sports Athletic Conference with the support of trustee Van Ducci and trustee Wagner, and a three-to-two vote. If you don't remember that, that was the meeting we all held at Schuler Hall. 400-plus people, lots of excitement that day. They pushed through that budget, or they pushed through those items onto the college while Dr. Swain was illegally temporarily suspended. This isn't something he created, this isn't something that he was initially in support of. So when you come back to the meeting last month, and Sarah Garcia's numbers say, hey, it's $4 million, so we can't do our normal cost, and it's not sustainable, the people that pushed through that budget do not get to attack Dr. Swain over it. It's bullshit and it's ingenuous. And I apologize for swearing, because I hear, we have members that think it's a joke, and they're laughing, but they're the ones who pushed it through. And you can't push that through and blame other people for the problem you created. It's not factual, it's not fair, and it's totally not correct to do. I don't mind that we switch conferences, I'm fully in support of it. I recognize it's going to cost us millions of dollars to do so. We see the impact, though, it's increased our enrollment, it's increased our public international view, but you don't get to blame the budgetary shortfalls on Dr. Swain for something that you enacted.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I am going to address this, because we've put out falsehoods on our tape and in public, don't you talk, you don't get to say. So, Mr. Chair.
No.
If you'll recall, there was a meeting, and the trustees voted to ask for a study to be done.
That is Mike, he's not supposed to be speaking.
To go to a different conference, and then it was recommended by President Swain.
Two sets of rules.
I know. But to blatantly misrepresent.
Let's go on. So the next is remarks for the good of the order, do we have any remarks for the good of the order? Go ahead.
Yeah, you know where I'm coming. This is fine, this is just a follow-on to the misinformation that was just given. Well, we twist and we turn, so let's talk about the convention for a moment, and the attacks on the GOP and the impacts on the college.
It wasn't an attack.
Because.
Question, dumbass.
Come on, let's.
Come on.
You're a very pleasant individual.
You, you were the devil.
So, so tell me.
recess for five minutes.
I'm, no, I'm gone.
Goodbye.
Are you gonna?
You know, because it is for the good of the, for the good of the college, the truth.
Chair, nothing happens unless you give, if the president gives her a warning, nothing will happen.
She's leaving.
Our meeting has just been interrupted.
She's leaving.
Nothing matters unless you give.
It matters, she's leaving.
She's gone. Okay, let's go ahead.
Thank you. Because quite frankly, ignorance and stupidity are the enemies of truth, and we need the truth about this college. People are scrutinizing this college and looking, and we have all these false narratives out there and this messaging that attacks this college and hurts the college, misrepresents what's going on at the college, and misrepresents the trustees. And it's amazing how some seem to think that they know what trustees are thinking. There's folks in the public media that seem to think they know what we're thinking, there's people in the public, there's people here at the college. Jeez, I don't think my wife knows what I'm thinking, but apparently they're just so smart that they know. So let's talk about this for a minute. If you look at what was passed and how it was passed, so I've been accused of, I voted for this and I did all this. Well, understand that there were the Platform Committee, the Rules Committee, the Resolutions Committee, and when they brought things to a vote, it was an up-and-down vote on the entire report. So nobody voted individually on any of those things. They were voted on in their entirety. And you can look at this like legislation, or even like a mediation. You're not going to like all of it, there's going to be some good parts and some bad parts. So when somebody votes in favor, they're voting for multiple things at the same time. So to try to be disingenuous, say that someone voted for something specific, one particular item, that's completely out of context, first off. Secondly, if you, it's like a reason to attack or to fundraise, and, and we got to create these narratives that there's evil people, and we got to save the college from them. Here's the deal, look a little more closely and use some discernment. If you read that closely, you keep seeing the words current technical education. Now, I have no particular insight, and I haven't talked to the people in charge, but I would suggest that really what that's about is the launch program that passed by one vote. And I suspect they're going to revisit that, and I don't know what will happen with that in the legislature. So to talk about all the funding, people have said we're trying to remove all public funding. Well, isn't federal money public funding, public money? So that doesn't even make any sense. A recent thing written said, federal money, I've talked about, now we're trying to get rid of all public monies. Well, federal money is public monies. You know, we've been told we're trying to develop the property. Now, if the press was honest, they'd talk about the deed restrictions here and how it can't be developed. They've tried to say we're making it a Christian college, we're trying to make it a private college. Gosh, what's left, guys? Every single thing you can try to throw out there for your political advantage and to be used in the elections, is this going to be the drumbeat all the way to November? Would you just stand back? There's this group, you draw this Venn diagram, the circles, and there's this group from downtown Core Lane centered, unfortunately.
Trustee Van Ducci.
And it's just, these attacks are going on. And again, the Republican attacks, I just said, why don't we try to make nice with our legislature and our legislators and our Republican Party, which you just attacked again, so we can work with them with the college? But no, no, that would not make sense to you, I'm sure, very short-sighted. So here we go, we're gonna, you know, we have all this chaos.
Trustee Van Ducci.
No truth, at least a.
That, that's enough.
Well, I'm just trying to answer the question, because I'm being accused of things.
This is supposed to be for the good of the order.
That's not true, and they're writing about the college, and people have that perception of the trustees and the college, and it's just not true.
I'd like a, a motion to adjourn.
No, Chair, I would like.
Motion to adjourn.
Chair, I would have remarks for the good of the order. Well, I would have a call for unity. I mean, talks about accreditation is watching our board meetings, and it's said to me that the participating community even has a responsibility in excellent board, in board meeting behavior.
Let's go ahead.
And then even, you call, people call out the Republicans, and how about just a call for unity?
And call out the trustee.
In trusting elected officials.
This is not on the topic.
Trusting elected officials to have their best communities.
I'm in charge, you do not have the floor.
In charge. I'd like the remarks for the good of the order.
Just adjourn. Mr. Chairman, we have a motion and a sec.
We're adjourned.